I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Monday, October the 7th, 2013, 7:05. Our invocation will be today by our new city manager and the attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to quote First Amendment, Second Amendment, First Amendment, Third Amendment. O dear Father, I urge you, first of all, that your petitions, prayers, intercessions, and stigmas be made for all people, for kings and all those in authority, for we can live whoever we want in our lives, and all through righteousness and holiness. For this is good and goodness God, our Savior. Amen. Thank you.
We're in a established forum. Councilman Miller, Councilman Morales, Councilwoman Castillo, Councilman Gerego, and Councilman Robides. Will everyone please stand for the questions and answers.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the presidency, Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Okay, before we start, I have a comment to make under Citizens' Comments. In the most recent city water bill, enclosed was a flyer announcing the Fourth Annual March of Biden. This event is sponsored by the Knights of Columbus, which I approve to be put in state. Because I did not see the final flyer, I was not aware that at the bottom of the flyer there was a Bible verse from Isaiah 40, verses 29 to 31, which offended some people because it is considered a violation of the First Amendment. To the citizens of this community, I apologize. Now, I'd like to entertain any other citizen comments?
Mayor, City Council, I'd like to address this. I'm not too sure. It's not about politics, but I just want to share what I know is going on. I know that you know that the United States, the government's shut down, and were like $43 trillion in the hole. And all I wanted to let you know is that we need to be prepared for a marshal law. Because this is going to happen, the Congress will take over, and we're going to have to be prepared for this when we die of crazy people. And I'm just trying to give you heads up. There's a website that you can go in there and look at. It's a, you can go on their YouTube, The End of America. It's an hour and 25 minutes, and it's not about Democrats, it's not about Republicans, it's not about the President, it's about America. I mean, it's in there. And if you go and look at that film and look at it, you'll see what I'm talking about. And I'm not trying to scare everybody, but you know what? When the marshal law takes over, we're going to have lots of people going crazy for money, food, and all kinds of stuff. We have to be prepared for this.
And it's called The End of America?
The End of America. You can find it on the YouTube. It's an hour and 25 minutes. Very, very interesting.
Thank you, Mr. Morales. You want to? Good enough with that, we're going to go on to our presentation. I'm Monica on the co-compliance update.
Mayor and Council, my heart copies, these are just copies of letters that I send out for co-compliance. You know, different ones are going to rush, there's ones that we lost. There's one for junk cars and debris and things like that that we send out. And, you know, it gives them the, you know, it tells them on there that they have five days to notify this office. And this yellow sheet is the door to hangars that we also can get out, you know, or try to use more. And it tells you within five, you know, they have five days to notify me when I send out the letter that what your intention is of. Either you're going to clean it, or, you know, if it's a big pile, if it's a big, huge, you know, place, then, you know, I give them a little bit longer than the permit, because they accumulate for years. It's not something that in 10 days needs to, you know, I can, you know, expect them to clean up, but as long as I see progress, you know, I'm okay with that. And if not, if I don't clear within five days, and I try to go back out and do a citation because if it's done, then I'll mark it on the letters. I keep copies of all the letters, and I have a binder in my office that at any time you can come and look at and get comments. You know, I write my comments down on most of the letters if they call, you know, some people call three or four times, you know, if they're having trouble finding somebody to move or finding somebody to shred. So I have a list of people that do shredding and send it out if they ask for it, you know. And it's just, I've had, you know, people complain about not, as we heard last meeting, you know, not getting it done. I have, I'm trying to do a lot of other things also, so I don't get to go out on 10 days and do the set list. And that's where I'm falling behind. But I'm sending out letters, and as people call in, you know, I still have a lot of people calling in and saying, hey, there's a few lot of here, or can you have my neighbor in the backyard, they have a mess. I have to go out and make sure that what they're telling me is true and then I'll send that out.
Have any fines been?
Yes, we had two fines issued, I think the last time, last week, we performed as the judge had court, there was four people that they had, that Ms. DeTrent, to be honest, had issued citations to. And actually, one of them got like two or three. So, yeah, and Judge and I have been working together. She meets me, she calls me in, and we work it out that, you know, they need to get, you know, they need to get cleaned up, and she tells me by this day, or she starts doing the fines.
Are you going on your own, or are you?
No, I drive alone, by myself.
By yourself?
The first one is me, you know, and usually if I get, I even have a list. I make a running list of, you know, people that have called in, and I go out and I check the properties, okay, yes, I need to send the letters, yes, I do. And as I'm going, I'm looking at other places and adding to the list and things like that, you know. Excepting we have sent 30 letters, and I have accepted duplicate. These are all just, you know, junk cars or, you know.
So do we know how many letters have been sent out?
I didn't count, I didn't.
Do we know, do we know how many people have been fined?
Only four that I know.
Only four. Do we know if anybody not responded to the letters? How many have not responded to the letters?
Because they do have to respond.
What's that?
On the letter, it says to respond, but it's, I, it, I'm not, this is not a full-time thing for me right now, so if they don't respond, I, so Mayor has helped me and done a chart so that I can go in there and at least check that off, so I know that these I need to. I have some that, I've had since the end of July, to be honest with you, that I haven't been able to go back out and look to see if there's, if they corrected it or not, you know.
City Mayor, I'm concerned that we don't have the data that says how many letters we've sent out, how many people have not responded. I'm also more concerned over the subjectiveness of this process in that if we have an ordinance that says you will respond in 10 days, and if you don't correct it in X number of days beyond that, fines are assessed. I think if the ordinance isn't working, we need to change the ordinance. But if the ordinance isn't in place, as the citizen brought up to the council at the last meeting, we have to enforce the ordinance that's in place and not do it subjectively. We, you know, when the complaints are received, we issue the letter, we need to be tracking that. When the response comes in, we need to be tracking that. And then when a lack of response is annotated, we need to take the appropriate actions. And then we need to see where we are on this issue. Four fines, not knowing how many letters we've sent out, not knowing how many people have not responded, to me, that's not acceptable.
Well, Councilman, if I may reply. I spoke into the city secretary today, and she's going to be setting up meetings so that we can meet with staff, each individual department, and Monica will be meeting with me and myself and Cindy, so that we can discuss these two things, so that I can get an understanding, a better understanding of what's going on, what's transpired, and maybe we can set up some more uniform type of procedures that we can go forward. So hopefully, the next meeting, when Monica's able to do the report, that we will have a better tracking system and procedures that is in place, that we can go ahead and do these things and give you a report on the standard where we are in the code enforcement area.
So can we push this report to the next city council meeting? Or have this on the agenda for the next city council meeting to receive a report on it?
Yes, sir. We're making that, and we'll have a report of where we are today and a procedure going forward. I am going to enjoy that it's not a seasonal type of thing, because it's going to be fall, but we still can do this code enforcement thing in the fall as well. And we will be looking at our city properties as well as we go around and start the code enforcement. We want to make sure that we are compliant as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Speaker, I heard Monica say that in addition to all the other duties that she's done, she's done a few functions. Is, are we going to give her extra help to do the report for the next council meeting? Or is that, is that doable? Do you think that's doable, or should we extend the time?
Well, I'm going to see what's doable after we have a chance to actually meet. I understand that there's a vacant position in the front office, and the secretary has plenty of time to get in as well as a controller, setting up some meetings individually. Now, I haven't had a chance to meet with them. Monica and I have met and talked, but it's been more so with a copy machine and giving information. So we're going to sit down to talk about just those issues that you spoke of, and if nothing else, at the next meeting, we should be able to give you how she wants to be able to spend her time, what projects we want to put priority on, and how we want to adjust that in assignments, something to understand. But I need to have an opportunity to meet with all of them. So we're going to be meeting with different departments, the police department, public utilities department, the front office as well as the back office, so that we can see and help us to talk about procedures. So we should be able to give you, if nothing else, a first review of what we're trying to do and put together, and maybe our goals and objectives are where we want to be. So we're going to try to present the agenda, but no promises, but we'd be nice and free, or we should be able to give you an analysis of where we are.
Also, Sherry, if you could, this next meeting also give me the information that I had asked for regarding the commercial vehicles parking on easements and turning down easements. So, you know, we need to send, change that with themselves as we go specific.
So as I'm going to be meeting with the chief of police, will you set that up on Monday? Yeah, we set up a meeting with the chief of police on Monday. We're looking for parking in easement and what is it now?
Right.
People parking in.
Parking in other homes.
Commercial mostly?
Right.
And parking on unemployed substances as well?
Right.
Great. And we'll be sure that when we have a meeting with the chief of police today, which is one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me add to this thing. In the last meeting where the citizen got up and spoke of a number of properties, he said he would provide a list of properties to which our co-compliance officer said she was aware of those properties. I was specifically concerned about those, that that's.
Well, I didn't talk about those.
Can you?
Because one of them is his sister next door, and we issued, they were supposed to go out and issue the citation. I gave that to the PD officer, and I don't know if he had the chance, because I know he switched over and has to do control now, and he's not just, it's Officer DeTrent. So he's taking up the slack for one of the officers that quit. So he, you know, Chad and I had a meeting, and he was going to have to pull him off of doing some co-compliance stuff. He would do it when he had time, but we don't have an officer that is specifically for the co-compliance to go out and issue the citation for that. So he was, he was, I made him aware, so if any notes, there were several that I've let him make and substitute. There was also one on 8th Street and 6th Street. They cut it, but I'm telling you right now, that needs to be cut again, because I drove by there today. One of the, off of the ones that were on the list that he provided to the mayor, we went through. And I have two of them that are on 6th Street by the, across from the school offices there. Those two also, they have told me they're out of town, both of them. They own, one of them is in Detroit, one of them is in San Antonio. And they put it, and Ms. Malloy's property was another one on the corner of Step, I believe it's 6th or 7th, or?
6th or 8th.
And 8th, right there, Ms. Malloy's property, it did get cut, you know, it did get cut, but it's not clean to what, you know.
And where did she get her notice at?
At the nursing home. She is in the nursing home, and I was instructed to send the officer. Because I had sent her letters, and sent her letters, and, and, you know, she responded finally and said, you know, I need to have it cleaned, and she was trying to get her son to his bed, and you see walking around all over town to clean up, and he wasn't doing that, so I was instructed to send PD to the nursing condition citation.
And whenever, do, do you have to address the power of attorney, or whatever, do you go to speak to these people, or are they at free?
No, no.
Referees?
She doesn't have, I mean, she's fine. I, I, honestly, I don't know why she's in there, because she's fine, but, you know, she's, you know. And I think, I believe those were the only ones that Mr. Gonzalez had, he brought, he met with the mayor, and he brought all this in, and I had already sent out to two or three of the properties, already sent out letters today.
Yes, Mayor, I know that City Councilman Miller, when he drives from San Antonio to Florisville every morning, he, he's seen that sign, Welcome to Florisville, it's all tore up. I think that we also need to go out there and fix it up, it's all tore up, it's just the wind tore it up, that's what I think is to fix it up.
Where does that sign at?
Welcome to Florisville, the big sign up there, 181.
Right before you get to business route, at one of the Y's, isn't that the one right there?
Right.
I believe that sign belongs to the Chamber of Commerce, and you can contact them, and you can get it along with us, and we can do it.
I believe the sign belongs to the EDC.
It says Florisville.
And what do you, how do you all go about going, are you all looking for more work as, as you go around, you're going around, looking for?
Well, I mean.
Or, because to me, it's, I know we want to beautify Florisville, but the one that we'd be looking at more is the one that are the complaints. Because what's going to happen, I go around today, and to me, it's always been like, you target one area, and I don't know how true it is, if that's what I'm saying, I would like to know, is, how do you go about, what point do you start at, or what is the, the worst yard to the better?
Well, to be honest with you, Councilman, I said, I've gone, I started off by, when we sent out the, that little flyer, I believe a few months ago, in the water bill, for people to call in, and I have a direct line, for people to call in with complaints, that's how it started.
Okay.
And people started calling in, you know, and I had some people calling in saying, really are pouring down the street, you know, two or three addresses down their street.
Because I've gotten some, a little bit of feedback from people saying, well, the city's got to start themselves with fixing, you know, like the easement, I went down all road, all Goliath.
And that's the goal.
All, all those easements are terrible.
Yes.
Of the city. So if the city wants, and I don't, we're going to say, your response might be saying, well, we don't got the employees for it. Well, if we don't have the employees, everybody can get them, or whatever it's going to take. But I drove by the sewer plant, the sewer plant over there on Goliath, there's a bunch of junk back there that can be cleaned at the sewer plant. In front of the sewer plant, they can cut all the grass at the sewer plant. I drove around all over that low di area, Goliath area, over here it looks all good, but what is happening to, to all the other areas? And to me, they're saying, okay, you're trying to tell me to cut my grass, to, to, to fix, and we're just nitpicking at people that, you know, I know one of my friends, and I'm not here to defend my friend, but I'm saying, he, he does a paint, a paint company, and he's got paint on his porch. Well, if he's got a paint company, I mean, you gotta say, okay, well, I gotta excuse a few paint cans, because you can't go, what I don't want is for you to go to the people, we're not going to have no junk period on the houses. I know we want to beautify, but it's going to start the month first, because all those streets, like I said, the, that park, that park the city has over there, low di, or Cantarana Park, not cut, the whole bike trail is not cut. So what are we doing to beautify area?
FDIC is responsible for cutting high density. And so when I get complaints about that, and like when there's trees and stuff over the road on the fence line of the properties that are bugging up to that, I, I, I've gone in several times to remember, I said, I received a complaint today, you know, you need to go by there, kind of, he says he's, you know, he'll, he'll tell me, okay.
Well, I'm just saying, whether it's the FDIC, whether it's the city of Florisville, if we just take a round and look at what, what, what we're lacking, you'll see.
As I'm driving around, I make the list, and I have made this, and I get.
So what are we going to do about that? Are we in the same boat with the citizens? I mean, are we going to fix our problems?
Exactly, and when I go.
Yes or no, or who's going to answer, or what's going to?
Uh, yes, sir. Regarding to, as I've been having the luxury of going to visit all of my facilities, because it's so new to me, that I visit, and I have to concur and agree that we need to do some housekeeping ourselves, as we're going to set the standard of what's going to happen in reference to that. And so Monica's been putting out the fires that she can, but what we want to do is to look at some of the things in reference to what we have in our own, yeah, but I haven't seen all of them. I have been out there to the treatment plant.
And if we had to fix the order, the ordinance were okay, try to fix it up a little, to, not, not for every little thing, because every little thing, say, well, fix this, fix that, we're going to find you. Well, you're going to have a lot of upset citizens out here, that's what I'm saying. If people are complaining, yeah, we go there, but at the same time, I look at the city's not doing, and I'm not talking about the workers here, don't take me wrong, it's, it's, what are we doing to fix it? And we're not, if you go down by sewer plant, sewer plant, you might go, oh, it's a sewer plant, you know, it's sewer, but everything around it, behind it, clear.
Yeah, I mean, we have, I have to agree, and I think one of the things in the ordinance that talks about the height and not this grass, is that it doesn't actually talk about the height. And so we need to be able to address it, because what I mean, consider cut grass is low enough, may not be what you consider. So we need to be able to look at that, and that's how we definitely come before the council, because what they're doing of these, our ordinances, which is something that we want to do anyway, so we're going to bring those four to you, so that we can come and get it on the same day.
And all I'm asking is, is for you to just get on that truck and, and check out all the easements, how dirty they are, or whatever the city owns, and then we start from there, and then we, then we'll talk to the citizens, and, you know, but we can't tell the citizens what to do first, when we're not even doing the practice.
Is content on the park officially ours now?
It is, it's no longer a park area, we're using it as a landfill area, we're going to be using some of our landfill stuff, we're using that area. FDIC has, has given it over to the city of Florisville, and we are using it as a stockpile area, I'm sorry, stockpile, not landfill.
But there, there's trees that are knocked down, and they've been knocked down for about two or three months, almost every day. There's trees there, there's weeds there.
Do we have a deed for that, Sharon?
I haven't seen a deed, but it probably needs to transition, and be determined by the attorneys and lawyers to ownership. And, Councilman, if I can, what we want to be able to do is to address the complaints, and as we address the complaints that come in on Monica's pipeline, do what we can do is actually also address the issue that we have ourselves. But Andrew has been nice enough to volunteer, to take me to all of the different locations and spend some time, be wearing blue jeans that day, so I can make sure I get around, so that I can get activated and we can go and see. And then even when we deal with the staff out in the field as well. So even if the issue that we're going to have to be able to address, I'm just glad that the, the season is amenable to us, that we can be able to fix it during the fall season, so we can get it around.
Councilman, is going to be driven by the, by the, by the.
Today? All, all the graffiti, they're cutting what?
Bob again.
Okay. But, but I'm also talking, and I'm not trying to cut down the, I'm talking about the easement, you go to the easement, go down Stanley Street, and see the easement down on that side, on the side of the road, I'm talking about all the side of the road, of low di, Cantarana, Plum Street, you know, stuff, stuff. But over here, they do a wonderful job over here, and I know they're lacking manpower, I know they're lacking manpower, but we, we have to try to cut, you know, go down Stanley Street, go down Stanley Street, go down Stanley Street, and look to the side, how filthy, go down the, 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 what, what do you call it, the?
The hiding bike.
The hiding bike, to see how hiding, how, they shouldn't be, even if it's the FDICs, even if it's the city, there shouldn't be no reason why, you know, we, they spend millions of dollars for it to have it like, like what, crash? So what I'm saying is, I have citizens that come and tell me, hey, man, y'all want to find us for doing this, and find us for doing that, and doing that, and you don't think y'all will, so what's up with that? And later on, we get a lawyer, they're going to come up here and say, okay, you find me this way, you know, they're not getting to that, they're just trying to, and, you know, try to, the easements around all town, I'm not saying that there might be someone here on HP that they're going to cut, I'm not, but I'm just saying that the parts that I'm going to go into, through.
I don't have a comment.
I'll move again, we'll move on.
But if you, they think that's so much right, the parks, the way they have their schedule, because I question the same thing, by the time they finish going all the way around town, it's time to go back again.
We understand.
You know, and it's, it's a lot, and we have so many good Samaritans in town that will go out and pick up.
I'll tell you what, if it wasn't for a lot, a lot of citizens that cut their own easement, we wouldn't be able to free them.
Yeah, because there are a lot.
Because there's a lot of people that cut the city easel.
Even around the fences, like we have.
Thank you.
That's what you call pride, people taking initiative to do a little bit of their own for the city also, you know? People don't want to work, they're going to complain about all day.
I'm sorry, were you volunteering to help us, Mr. Morales?
I don't volunteer, any time of the day, but you know what, everybody needs to take pride in the city, they need to become united, you know, and work together, instead of working against each other, because, you know, the city's going to be fighting, and the city council is going, yeah, you know what, the city screwed up, well, of course the city's going to be screwed up, but it takes, you know, somebody with, with a little bit of knowledge and get the people motivated. And that's one, one thing I don't see, the city council doesn't, you know, do nothing with the citizens, they, they just, prime example, we had that thing at the, up in the front, I didn't see no city council up there mingling around with the people.
Where's that at?
When you were selling cakes across the street? When we were having a thing, and you were having, selling, bake sale across over your castles, remember that day?
What, what event are you talking about?
I'm sorry?
What are you talking about, the November?
Yes. I, I see nobody from the city council that came over and mingled around with the people, nobody.
Do you see, are you there whenever we do mingle with them? Are you there at every, at every event that we're at?
I try to, I try to.
Well, yeah, we try to too.
But I understand that, but that was a big event that they were doing for the city.
I didn't, I didn't see you at the fire department. I try to make events where everything's.
But you're not the city council.
Sometimes you can't make it.
I'm not the city council, I'm just a, a person that goes around looking.
Now, we're going to go on to new business consideration and action to approve 2014 City of Florisville holidays, Sharon?
Yes, ma'am. At the last council meeting, it was requested that I go back to the employees of the city. They give them the option of the Thursday before peanut festival next year, or the day after Christmas Day. And so what I did is I put a sign up to me out there, and the employees were all asked to choose the day that they want, the day after Christmas Day is the date that the majority of the employees chose for next year. But what I've explained to them, you know, how, what, why we were asking that question, and so that's the date that they chose. I've updated the list of holidays for 2014, and included bathroom party as well. As Mr. Miller said at the last meeting, they were all very excited to hear that they would have five days off the number of Christmas times going with their families, so it was a, a good option, I'd be glad.
This is 17 employees, Sharon, did we not get the rest of the employees, or?
They were, it was offered to all of them, those are the ones that signed it, it was just to let you know that the majority of them are on that shooting paper.
And once they decide, they won't care.
I think if, if it was given to them, it was kind of like, yeah, whatever, they did it.
There's a total of 10 employees?
Yeah.
13, 15, 16.
15, who was Sharon?
15?
I think 15, 14, I believe so. Like, my name is not on there, Laura's name is not on there, our city members are not on there, this one, I'll see the guys in the building, the girls up front, which is where the majority of the employees are. And it was walked out to the break warehouse, where they all eat in the morning or in the afternoon, and that's where we extended the end, we'll serve with you. Um, and that's where we asked them to be able to sort of put the options around why we, why we brought back to them.
So not even half of the employees signed it?
Signed it.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Before we take a motion, I'm concerned that, that if we have fifty-four employees, we've only got seventeen, uh, commenting on this. This isn't even a majority of fifty-three, fifty-four employees. I'm, I'm concerned about just, if, if we take action on this, that, that this is reflective of the majority of city employees?
Well, the other, not the sign. Yes, we, I mean, we gave them the option, they chose not to, not to go either way, you know? You know, we have to, who, who was returned an appropriate effort or initiative to do something.
Did they not sign, or did, were they just, was this, this just put out there or?
No sir, it was like, I wanna make, we explained to them what was going on with the holidays, we told them in order to show the council who, uh, which majority, you know, let, let you guys know what their decision was, that they would need to sign. And, uh, and this is the amount of people that signed.
My only concern, like on a, on a fiesta, I had, uh, I was talking to the employee, that when it's, when it's fiesta, I mean, like the peanut festival, I think, if I'm not correct, there's a, they work four hours a day, uh, Saturday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
That would be an on-call for, sir.
But, but they have to be out there checking the, the water plants and the, okay? So, so they really don't get any, any time off, is there's a way, is there a possible way that maybe like on, on a given day, they wanna pay where they can have a day off? Versus, you know what I'm saying to you, because they, the on-call still works four hours a day.
They get, they get paid four hours for that week, and then if they actually get called in on a week, that's when they come into work, they don't come just sit there.
No, but like the ones that work during the peanut festival, they work and go check, they're the ones that have to work.
That's right, and we have to check the wells, the, the water.
But what I'm saying, how many hours do we spend on the weekend checking the wells?
Usually, it's usually four hours, or four hours.
But, but it is an on-call rotation, correct? And, and, and each employee has the option to say, give it up to somebody else if, if they didn't want it?
Which is correct.
Yes, they never work for any holiday, whether it be Christmas, New Year's, because they have to be able to, regardless if it's a peanut festival or not. They're on-call, you have to have somebody to call, and that's the, that's the someone that was on-call.
They're actually not sure. Understand some of do want, do want once in four hours, uh, because they've got something planned in the future, say, hey, I'll trade with you in five months from now, I want this day off.
That's right.
Then it's the option that, that the employees have.
That's right. We give them an on-call schedule, and it's up to their team leader for that on-call crews, we need, you know, to, you know, then switch out at that time. We just have to have a minimum of a certain number of people on call through on-call for that weekend, you know?
Can I come back to, to this, you said, this was laid on the table and the employees were explained. Did we have a formal employee meeting where all fifty-four employees were made aware of this? Was this at a break where we talked to some of the employees? Was it on the table and those employees that weren't talked to didn't know what it was? Uh, again, I'm, I'm only concerned that we give every employee the opportunity and the knowledge of what we're requesting of them. Now, laying it on a table isn't, uh, an adequate way of saying we're soliciting the input of all fifty-four employees. If this was a formal employee meeting and this was quite, that's a different story. How was this presented to the employees?
It was presented, presented to the employees out at the warehouse, and each supervisor was also given a copy, so that if any of them had questions after it was done, that they would know. It laid there for what, a day and a half or so out there? Um, all the supervisors were, were notified and they all spoke to their employees. Um, because not everybody was there that day, there were people that were off on comp time, there were a couple of guys that were all sick, um, and then they were saying they were going to go somewhere and had to get up and go. So at that point, the supervisor was notified, they were explained, they were given a copy of the paper. I feel confident that all of the employees were given the option to make the choice of which day they wanted.
Let me add that, I'm sure as, as, let's see, the employees were, were just around.
Sheriff, yeah, I think she's done her due diligence, I think she's done enough, uh, for this, we talked enough about it, so I moved to approve the 2014 City of Florisville holidays.
With the Christmas five days of it?
Whatever's on the sheet, right here. Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's just a Christmas, they want to.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Castillo, second by Councilwoman Lowndes, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Now it's going to cancel October the ninth, twenty thirteen meeting.
Yes, at the last council meeting, the ninth was the date it was given to have the council meeting for this week, and after we, um, discussed it, I, I talked to each of the council members, tonight was a more fitting night for everyone to be here. So we just need for the votes to cancel the meeting on the ninth, uh, if we are not.
So a motion?
A motion to Councilwoman Lowndes, may I have a second?
Second?
Second by Councilwoman Lowndes, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Motion carries five zero. Now we're gonna go on to new business, two C, consideration and action scheduled November, December, twenty thirteen meeting dates.
We've handed out the calendars, it was the same ones we handed out last meeting, um, requesting that we make the schedule for November and December. Um, on your calendar for November, uh, Friday the first and Tuesday the fifth, which are in green, are our election days. Um, and so the eleventh is gonna be a holiday, the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, because our normal, uh, schedule would be the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth. I'm asking to reschedule the meeting, uh, at least for the twenty-eighth. Uh, the fourteenth can still follow on the regular day, I can post the agenda on that Friday prior, and that's not an issue, it would just be the one on the twenty-eighth. It would need to be scheduled to the holiday end of November.
What makes you suggest a matter?
I don't know, Eric, I don't know.
And I will let you know that on, on the fifth.
I'll, I'll make it, I'll make, uh, the seventh and the twenty-first, we can move to the fourteenth, that way we gotta, instead of doing it one week in a row, but I don't know what you think, Eric.
My only suggestion on that is gonna be, because we're having an election on the fifth, and hopefully we won't have any runoffs, we don't have any information in order to canvass them and get all of the documents done in time. Um, I was, and I would request that we could do a meeting the following week to give myself time to get all of the documents together, so that I can bring the canvassing of the votes from the fifth to the council on that very first reading after the election. And that's only a personal request from the, obviously.
That's on the fourteenth.
The election is on the fifth, um, the regular meeting, I'm sorry, the fourteenth, fifth, that's a regular meeting. That would give you time to have everything ready for you guys to have an election, where we did the seventh, it would be a little bit difficult to make sure that everything is compiled to the one. That's correct, yes.
It can be on the fourteenth.
And since we're calling a special meeting, it doesn't have to be on a Thursday, we can have it on additional days since it's a special meeting. Um, if you want it to be possibly Tuesday before the holiday, or.
What about the twenty-seventh? Are the, are the twenty-first, the twenty-first or the twenty-seventh?
The twenty-fifth, I'll be cooking turkey.
Okay, the twenty-first.
I do my free food at home, wait.
They, they won't mind. Does the city manager have any recommendations?
I'm looking at the calendar, I'm, and I know how I quickly started for the holiday. Um, I'm looking at the date, and I believe that, um, the part you just said, the fourteenth, the fourteenth was amenable. Uh, for her to have her, for her to recommend, my recommendation would be the fourteenth, and so that we can stay on schedule, stay on top for the holiday. The twenty-first would be amenable as well, so that the public would be starting to meet in on a Thursday, and we'd be keeping an active meeting on a Thursday. Uh, so the twenty-third would be amenable, as you get close to Thanksgiving, some people, um, get out of the habit, so I don't think any day would be for Thanksgiving when it's there.
So your recommendation is the regular scheduled meeting on the fourteenth and a special meeting on the twenty-first?
Yes sir, that is my recommendation.
Is that okay with you, Mario? It's okay with me?
I guess the broader question is.
I'm gonna be here on the fourteenth, but we'll go ahead, because that's a regular meeting, so I can't fight that one, go ahead, so what you're gonna do?
What, the question is, do we need two meetings in the month of November? Can we do with one meeting in the month of November?
I, I don't think we can do it one meeting in the month of November, mainly because you have a lot of things coming before you, uh, that we need to be able to address. As we entered into our new fiscal year, as you know, October one, um, we don't wanna lose the momentum, uh, because the next month of December, I believe you have a lot of things, some more holiday issues as well. I think you all have just approved for us to have five days off the Taylor's Day, and so we don't want to lose the momentum, uh, going as we start this new fiscal year. Uh, so we really need to get your approval on a lot of things going forward.
There was no momentum, but, because we're known for making special, a lot of special meetings, you know, I mean, it wouldn't really, but we'll go ahead and go with your suggestion, which was what?
Uh, the fourteenth or the twenty-first, sir.
Fourteen, I made a motion for the fourteenth and the twenty-first.
I second it.
No, no special meeting.
Okay, and our scheduled meeting date for November is in November the fourteenth and the twenty-first. And a motion by Councilwoman Lowndes, second by Councilwoman Castillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. I'm sorry, we can do this later now.
Okay, December, our meetings follow the twelfth and the twenty-sixth, of course, the twelfth is fine, the twenty-sixth is the day after Christmas. We can choose to have a meeting on that day, if you choose it, um, it was just put out there since we were doing that, so we're November due to meetings.
I'll make a motion and just go ahead and do December twelfth and nineteenth.
Cause I do have to business shop in the twenty-sixth.
All seven.
So that is the twelfth and the nineteenth.
City manager, is that an acceptable or equitable date?
Uh, yes sir, I agree with the mayor, I'm trying to do the twenty-sixth after the first of July as well. But if you can get to, um, to try to stay in line with the true feeling of what I read in the charter in the meeting of twice a month, I think this is definitely gonna be the cover and keep the momentum as we go forward, and I'll thank the council for, um, meetings back to back, up, back to back, so that we can keep things going, uh, in a process, and I had an opportunity, uh, to speak to Councilmember Julius, and that's one of the things that we mentioned, we want to be able to keep the wonderful work that you all are playing the groundwork going forward. So I would agree with her interpretation.
Okay, do you want to have a motion?
You did a motion, second.
My, make the motion and challenge that.
Now we're gonna go on to item.
Okay, I think you said very good.
All in favor?
Thank you, my dear.
Aye.
Your turn.
I made the motion, twenty-second, and we all win the.
The December, that's for the December one.
Hold on a minute.
Just take a vote.
All in favor?
Did you take your lessons, sir?
It's the three minutes, it's on. Okay, now we're gonna go on to item two D, consideration and action to approve the contract with the Boys and Girls Club. Councilwoman Lowndes?
Uh, the concern I have now there is a simple legal issue. Uh, as I read the article in the Wilson County News, that the four A, the way it was reported in the four A is, or in the newspaper, was that the four A, uh, with the Boys and Girls Club entered into this agreement. Uh, and hence my concern, in that it is my understanding that the four A in partnership with the city are managing the events center. So such a contract would have to come to council for approval. In the document that was presented to us, I see the interim city manager signed this contract. Uh, it is also my understanding of the city charter that all contracts, uh, signed by the city manager are also brought to council for approval. This had not been brought to council. Uh, councillor, have you had a chance to look at it, and I know you and I spoke about this, what is your opinion of it?
Well, there's one probably serious issue at page six. I'm not aware of Florisville Event Center.
Mayor, honey, what the four A did was exactly what we had done in the past. We have several other entities that lease space out there, the community council, ACOG, the Girl Scouts, and now the Boys and Girls Club. We've always done the lease, was brought to the city manager, signed one, it was agreed amongst ourselves, we never brought anything to the city manager. So if something has changed or something we weren't aware of, that is how we did it in the past. It's agreed on by the Boys and Girls Club, the four A agreed on it, we had the city managers sign off on it. To the best of our knowledge, it was legal and exactly the way we were supposed to have done it.
What's a correct way, what's a correct procedure?
I'm really commenting on the entity, I think we know the four A corporation or four B corporation. And I just wanna get it straight, Florisville Event Center is an entity we don't know.
Well, then it should be the minority, the, the union.
And also, I'll bring to your attention that we do have an attorney that we pay on the staff. You know, he, he's the one who drafted this off of a lease that was already in existence. And just a few words were changed, so Florisville Event Center.
I'm not trying to be overly picky.
No, I, I, I got you guys.
And I'm not concerned with the contract, Ms. Poplin, what I'm concerned about is we've been preached to by our comptroller that the four A corporation is responsible for the sales tax collection and the debt payment of the events. That it is, the event center is a city operation, hence it is funded through the general fund. The second piece that I, that I bring on this is it was a council directive that the four A work with the city to get to a point to eventually take over management of the events. So the four A corporation cannot issue a contract legally for city property without coming to the council. That's my point. I don't have any problem with this lease. The lease is a good lease, you and I reviewed it, I saw the changes that were made. My concern is that we don't end up having to litigate something down the road because of the way this lease was executed.
Is that applied to all the other agencies out there, just out of curiosity? Do we have leases with this other entities?
We have leases with, the other entities that I just listed.
Okay.
The same there.
Can you answer the question of, is this the appropriate way to execute the contract or not?
It's not.
Thank you.
Why hasn't it been corrected prior to this?
I, I have never seen it before.
Okay, they have their own attorney, do we go by their attorney or our city attorney?
Well, I think what, what I hear being discussed tonight is, because this is joint management, in fact, you have the hooks up to your city manager's control, and under your city comptroller's control, and you have general funds involved, is that you should ultimately have these come before the council for review and approval.
But that would say two of the other agencies out there are leasing also on a common.
If you come through the same process, yeah.
They all have the same lease.
Do they have to be revised?
Yeah, because it's been approved in the past, because we have signed, I don't have it in front of me, um, on the system, but.
I mean, we, we could easily approve the others, uh, retroactively, to that matter, all I'm trying to do is two things. One is, uh, honor the fact that you all have the joint responsibility and you've taken it on, and for audit. And the other is, is the name here, and I'm, I'm sorry to be picky about the name, but we've had some issues about what we call each other, agency bonds, not personally. And we need to get the name. agency-wise, not personally, and we need to get the name right.
So we would have to change this contract, or, or?
All we need, all we need to do is.
Does it change to four A?
It's either the City of Forestville. It's either going to be the City of Forestville and Laura's four A.
Which would be both, in the case of the council directive.
So we're setting precedence from now on, is that?
No, correcting an error to ensure that we're.
I understand that part, okay, but what I'm saying is that we're setting precedence by having all the contracts come to the council.
These are just only the four A, it's understanding, if your administration goes, you have the city manager exercising control over it jointly, then yes, you are.
So that we, we're not going to question, do we need the action agency, and, or, or do we need to redo all those, or?
Pursuing, we'll just come back and ratify them after the contract, okay?
And change it procedure.
Yeah.
If I may, um, because I.
We don't need to make a big deal of this, all we're trying to do is get it correct.
Okay, so all it takes there is what you're saying, is change the name?
Yeah, from this one, and then put an approval block for the council.
Okay, so we can just change the name, and everything can go in?
We can change it tonight on the contract.
On contract for approval person.
Okay.
We don't need to bring her back here, there's no reason to make a big deal, I just want to get it correct.
And just for information, so, so if we possibly can, um, if, if you could provide, because it's down here, I don't know, but we can have a list of other, of W O options that we have on file with the city secretary, that we have a copy of the other contracts out there, as to contract information approved, and how many, because I'm quite sure the council's curious as to now, how many actually signed the Boys and Girls Club, uh, are out.
All of the contracts are there on file at the center.
So can we approve them all in one whack? You give them to the counselor, let him go on and make the change, you bring them all to the council on one whack and approve it?
I'm sorry, I think we need to approve this one, and then bring the others and approve them.
But let's do that, because.
Let's approve this one with the amended name.
Right.
Okay, so can I make a motion?
Please.
Okay, I move to approve the contract with the Boys and Girls Club with the amended name on the contract.
One second.
Okay, a motion by Councilwoman Geller.